Town of Prescott Valley, regular town council meeting, June 25th, 2020, call to order. At this time, I'd just like to invite Pastor, come on down, from First Southern Baptist Church, is that correct?
As we pray this evening, in the midst of all the things that are going on, COVID-19, it's good that we spend a little time in Psalm 91, where we read, "He who dwells in the shelter of the Most High will abide in the shadows of the Almighty. I will say to the Lord, my refuge and my fortress, my God in whom I trust, for he will deliver you from the snare of the fowler and from the deadly pestilence; he will cover you with his pinions, and under his wings you will find refuge." Father, thank you for the promises of your word. Thank you that you're with us this evening, that you know all that's going on, that you care. Father, tonight, in the midst of a troubled world that we live in, we pray that we would find refuge in you, that we would understand that you care and that you're here, and that you have the answers. So Father, as we think about those things that will happen tonight, for the decisions that will be made, that are important decisions and that will deal with our health and our stability as a community, Father, we pray for wisdom for these men and women who are going to make decisions. Father, we pray for protection for those who serve us, for our first responders, for our AMTs, and for our police and sheriffs, for our firefighters, and for those who are serving in our hospitals. Father, we pray that you would watch over them, that you would keep them safe, that you would use their resources and their willingness to serve, to bring about good in our lives. Father, we also, tonight, lift up to you those who are in our community, our neighbors, some of which have not even ventured out of their houses for three and a half months. Father, we pray that you would keep them in your arms of care. We pray against the fear, we pray, Father, that they would find joy. In fact, Father, let us all choose joy tonight. In the midst of all this going on, let us make that conscious choice to say, "We want the joy that only you can give, the author of true joy." So Father, we pray for your blessings on all that will go on tonight, we pray for your blessings on our city. We pray that you would touch us with your grace, for we pray these things in Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, sir. Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Hunt?
Here.
Councilmember Schumacher?
Present.
Councilmember Packard?
Present.
Councilmember Grossman?
Still here.
Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Vice Mayor Nye?
Present.
Mayor Palguda?
Present.
We have a Coram Mayor.
Thanks, ma'am. I'm gonna dive right into this. Proclamations, Park and Recs Month.
Whereas parks and recreation programs are an integral part of our communities throughout this country, including the town of Prescott Valley, and whereas our parks and recreation are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of both citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of a community and a region, and whereas parks and recreation programs build healthy, active communities that aid in the prevention of chronic disease, provide therapeutic recreation services for those who are mentally or physically disabled, and also improve the mental and emotional health of all citizens, and whereas parks and recreation programs increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction, and whereas parks and natural recreation areas improve water quality, protect groundwater, prevent flooding, improve the quality of the air we breathe, provide vegetated buffers to development, and produce habitat for wildlife, and whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors, and whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month, and the town of Prescott Valley recognizes the benefits derived from parks and recreation resources. Now therefore, I, Colpulguda Mayor of the town of Prescott Valley, do hereby proclaim and recognize the month of July as Parks and Recreation Month, and the town of Prescott Valley, and call upon park and recreation supporters to join us in recognizing the importance of our nation's parks and recreation facilities, and encourage all citizens to enjoy all the recreation activities available in their community.
We have Jason Elmer here, accepting that, and I'm sure we can all agree that parks play a huge part, especially nowadays, when we're trying to encourage people to get out, physically distanced, and enjoy what we have. So recently, I've challenged people to go out and try to find a park that they haven't been to, and just kind of walk around and just kind of check it out, and they'll see that what we have here in Prescott Valley is pretty amazing. So, Jason, for you guys, tell Brian your team is amazing, and thank you for what you do.
You know, this is an outstanding month for parks and recreation, we have the Fourth of July celebration coming up here shortly that we're going to be doing for the town of Prescott Valley, and as parks and recreation workers, you know, we take this into consideration that this is something that we love to do for our community. We love to be there, we love to provide an opportunity to recreate, and we thank you very much for recognizing us in this month.
At this time, I'd like to welcome Josh Dooson. Come on up here and...
Well, I wasn't gonna do this for Josh, but he kept hounding me that I had to get up here and say something, so since I did write this for him, I guess I will. Okay, so where do we start when it comes to Josh? He began his journey with the town on June 22nd, 2015, when he filled the position of building maintenance supervisor. Since then, he has proven to be a vital addition to the Public Works team, as well as the entire organization. The amazing leadership and hard work he's displayed in bringing our facility division to be the best in the Quad City area is apparent in his division's work. As we all know, Josh can be very serious, however, he can also be very funny, and loves to participate in events throughout the year. He has the energy to want to do it all, and has his manager drives me crazy, and that reminds me of one story that makes me shake my head. I was walking down the hallway to see Josh dressed in a tuxedo, a top hat with Mickey Mouse ears, Mickey Mouse gloves. You've seen the video, you know what I'm talking about. I shook my head and kept walking, not knowing what Josh had gotten himself into at this time. When a vendor came in needing a signature from Josh, you can imagine the shock to the vendor when he walked him over to Josh, dressed like this, but Josh took his form, removed his Mickey Mouse gloves, and signed the form like a professional. Yeah, the vendor was a little confused, but it proves to be a good story to this day. I'm very proud and honored to have Josh as part of our team, as well as having him as a friend. Josh has not only proven to be a great employee, but that he is a supportive friend, a great dad to his two sons, Troy, Gavin, and his girlfriend, Stephanie. Now, when it comes to his girlfriend, I almost hit his wife, but I thought maybe he'd gotten a little bit weird about that, so anyways, I look forward to seeing Josh grow in the family that we have here at the town, and I hope he continues to make us laugh, whether it be on the gala dance floor or by wearing a silly costume. We look forward to the laughs he'll supply and support he'll give for a very long time to come. I'm very proud of Josh. He took on the role of facility supervisor, and he's just moved forward to it. I've heard nothing but a lot of good things from several different departments on the job he does for the town of Prescott Valley. I appreciate you, Josh.
I just want to thank, right, I just want to thank council for everything, Alex, Norm, Public Works, Streets for always being there to give me a hand, Fleet for being there, Parks and Rec, I appreciate it, thank you, guys.
I'm sure everyone would agree that Josh doesn't have the "no" or "I can't" in his vocabulary. If you ask him, he is 100% all-in doing something, so for your boys out there, your dad has the passion and the work ethic like no man I've ever seen, so you should be proud of that. Come on up, sir.
Well, Mayor and Council, Bill is a really great example of what happens when you flunk retirement. And, you know, Bill moved here from a different country to the west of us, and we're very fortunate that he chose to leave California and join us in Prescott Valley, and he wanted a relaxed lifestyle, and then he made the mistake of coming to work for the town as a capital improvements manager. Now, what is capital improvements? Well, when Bill got here, his number one issue to deal with was a leaky roof in the library, okay, and we had one of those once, okay? Well, a capital improvements manager causes things to be built, causes the town to follow all the state requirements for low bids and things like that, but also is very concerned with warranty and cost control, and that's what a capital improvements person does. So normally, Bill would have spent a lot of time working with the arena, which he did, as we ended up putting in new LED lighting over there and making sure all the state statutes were followed, but we go back to the library, and so rather than having a fairly broad reach on a whole bunch of projects, you ended up with the library, and then after you got done with that, you ended up with the library. And here we are, five years later, and what is Bill spending his time doing this week? It's the library, and he's working on depositions and all of these things to go ahead and make sure, number one, that we get our money's worth out of the building, which we have not done yet, but I'm very confident between Bill and the legal team that we're going to get our money's worth and also recover pain and suffering associated with Casey running around with an umbrella inside of the library, wondering why the roof is leaking. Anyway, Bill, thank you very much for stepping into something that is just about ready to be cleaned up with the assistance of the legal department going ahead and carrying a big stick around, and you've got a big stick as well that's going ahead and making sure that we get that taken care of, but also, thank you for going ahead and keeping other departments, other than the library, and things like other projects around town, and keeping us on the straight and narrow. And so your experience, paid for by that state to the west of us, really has paid off for the town, and we appreciate that. And at the same time, I do believe that you're playing gentleman rancher and thoroughly enjoying it, so welcome to the community and thank you very much for five years.
All right, absolutely. I, thank you, Larry, I really appreciate the kind words. I will correct you on one, I help the legal department, they don't help me. And they deserve a lot of credit in bringing this thing with the library around, and I thank you, five years, who knew? Yeah, it's gone by really quick, so I'm glad I'm here, I'm glad I get to play gentleman rancher, and we're gonna, we're gonna make things right with the library. It's gonna be what we always wanted it to be.
Bill, it's my hope that I will walk in this building someday when it's raining. There will not be buckets, there will not be towels, and Casey won't have an umbrella. It's all on you, Bill.
I was just mentioning Ivan, this is the most I've heard this man talk in two years. I don't, I'm so surprised. I mean, I know he's out there grinding every morning, every night, and you are, between you, Stephen, and Ivan, just killing it with the library, so props to him because you guys work hard, literally, almost sounds like every single day, something's coming up with the library that you're addressing, so the man is working hard and we're getting our money's worth out of him, so thank you. We'll start on the end. Councilman, do you have anything? Councilman?
As far as I know, everything's still on for Fourth of July fireworks, correct? So we're all good.
That is correct. Councilman, I'd like to wish our clerk happy birthday. Glad I'm a great job on what you do. Great job. I was down there earlier and our desk was all decked out in graffiti, what was it? I mean, it was like glitter and balloon, you got a bunch of stuff that the girls took care of you with, right? Confetti, yes, yeah, so again, happy birthday, hope it's a great one, I'm sure every birthday should be spent in council.
I've spent a few. How many of you got the little door hanger with the census reminder on one side and party on the porch on another? Anybody out here look? Got mine. Watch out, as you live in Prescott Valley, you still will be getting one. We gotta do a good job on the census, yeah, I'm sorry, Larry, we have to do the best job in Yavapai County on the census. Party on the porch. All July, we want you to interact with your neighbors. We want you to have a little fun. We want you to relax and say, "Hi, neighbor, we've never met," or "Hi, neighbor, I am so glad you're my neighbor." Please think about just doing those simple things.
Councilman?
Yeah, I don't have a lot to talk about, but I want to talk about a phone scam that is being done right now. I got the second one today in about two weeks. Basically, they call and they say, "We would like to do a health survey with you," and then they go, "Could you hear me?" What they want you to say is yes. This way, they have your name, your phone number, and they have you saying yes, so they could use your voice to buy something or purchase something or approve something. Anyway, they will use it against you. So today, when they asked it, I said, "Yes, I can." I didn't say, "Yes, I can," I said, "I can hear you," and they immediately hung up. This is the second time that something like this has happened. So be really careful, they are getting more sophisticated on how they dupe you into saying something that will be used against you in the future, and you won't even know it's happening until it's too late, and then you have to take all kinds of action to correct it and stop it or whatever. So it's identity theft, and there's a whole bunch of other stuff, so please be aware of that.
Thank you. Councilwoman? Nothing. All right, folks, moving on. Consent agenda, item eight, all matters listed under the consent agenda are considered routine by the town council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and be considered separate for discussion and possible action. Council, we've all had a chance to review consent agenda, here's your opportunity to have a question or have an item removed, and if not, I will seek a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second.
Clerk, please call the vote.
Mayor Palguda?
Yes, I must be logged out.
The pass is unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. Moving on, item nine, we're gonna be Library Board of Trustees reappointment, Diane Lamont. I think Vice Mayor's taking this one?
I'm taking that, yes. On June 30th, 2020, Diane Lamont's term on the Library Board of Trustees will come due for renewal. She has submitted a renewal application letter requesting reappointment. Diane was first appointed to a partial term on November 16th, 2017, and this reappointment would be her second consecutive term. Myself, council members Rick Anderson and Marty Grossman are recommending reappointment of Diane Lamont for a term with a renewal date of June 30th, 2023, and if I remember what she looks like, I don't see her. All right, I just wanted to be sure, I didn't want to leave her out.
All right, so we'll just need a motion.
We just need a motion in a second.
I'll make a motion to reappoint Diane Lamont to the Library Board of Trustees to a term with a renewal date of June 30th, 2023 by electronic vote.
I'll second.
Clerk, please call the vote.
The pass is unanimously, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Moving on to 9B, Councilman Anderson, will you be handling this one?
Yes, I will. On June 30th, 2020, Edward Lira's term on the Arts and Culture Commission will come due for renewal. He submitted a renewal application letter asking to be reappointed. Edward was first appointed to a partial term on this board on September 12th, 2019. This reappointment would be his second consecutive term. Vice Mayor Laura Lee Nye and Councilmember Marty Grossman and myself are recommending reappointment of Edward for a term with a renewal date of June 30th, 2023.
And I believe Edward's not here?
No.
No. A motion?
I'll make a motion, reappoint Ed Lira to the Arts and Culture Commission for a term with a renewal date of June 30th, 2023 by electronic vote.
I'll second. Go for it, Don.
Councilman Packard has the second. Go ahead and call the vote.
The pass is unanimous, Mayor.
Nancy was appointed to a partial term on this board on July 26, 2018, and this reappointment will be her second consecutive term. Myself, council members Anderson and Grossman are recommending a reappointment of Nancy Smith for a term with a renewal date of June 30th, 2023. Come on down, Nancy. Thank you for taking the time to be here. We're gonna ask her why she's going to sign up again.
First of all, thank you, council, for your support of the arts and culture programs that go on here in Prescott Valley. Although this is a second term, this is actually after a little hiatus. This is my 12th year, or 13th year, on the Arts and Culture Commission, so I'm kind of the old lady of the group. But I'd just like to say that a town without artistic programs and cultural enrichment is a town that's either dead or dying. So, I appreciate the support that we get from you, and this town is certainly anything but dead and dying. We know that when times come like they are right now, and you're planning the budget for next year, we know we're gonna be the first ones off the list on the budget. It's okay, because at the very heart of arts is this word called creativity. That's what we are. You take our money away, we'll figure out some other way to get things done, and sometimes it's really pretty innovative. So, I thank you for the opportunity to serve again, and I appreciate all that you do for us. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're a blessing to arts and cultures here, Nancy. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, I will make a motion. Motion to reappoint Nancy Smith to the Arts and Culture Commission for a term with a renewal date of June 30th, 2023 by electronic vote.
I'll second.
Clerk, please call the vote.
The pass is unanimously, mayor.
It's a done deal, Ms. Nancy.
Okay, so I'm back again. You gotta put up with me some more.
Thank you, ma'am, for coming tonight. Now, rounding things out, Parks and Rec Commission, reappointment of Buzz Gummer. Vice Mayor, are you taking this, or is Councilman Anderson taking this one?
I'll take it. We didn't decide before, so.
Okay.
Okay. Oh, guess what? Rick, if you've got it, you'll have to do it.
I'll be glad to do it. On June 30th, 2020, Buzz Gummer's term on the Parks and Recreation Commission will come due for renewal. He submitted a renewal application letter asking to be reappointed. Buzz was first appointed to a partial term on this board on November 17th, 2016, and this reappointment will be his third consecutive term, which, of course, we know that's also with a break, and you've been there a little bit longer than that. Vice Mayor Laura Lee Nye and Councilmember Marty Grossman and myself are recommending reappointment of Buzz Gummer for a term with a renewal date of June 30th, 2023.
And I would love to make a motion.
Say a few words?
I just do it for the money. It's been fun over all these years. It's been educational. I mean, the master plan we just went through, to see what a community has to go through and look at for the future, for the citizens of our town, it was just an eye-opener and an amazing thing to go through. And I'm just keep sticking around because I'm hoping for Ogwofia Park, and I want to be a little bit of a fingerprint in that, so. And then I'll have a few words for Ogwofia Park. And then, but other than that, I got nothing else to do.
Well, Buzz, instead of getting this much money, you're gonna get this much money.
Doubled my figures already. What a year. Perfect.
Nicely said, sir. Can we get a motion for Buzz?
I'll make the motion to reappoint Buzz Gummer to the Parks and Rec Commission for a term with a renewal date of June 30th, 2023 by electronic vote.
And I'll second it, Buzz. Thank you for your service.
Clerk, please call the vote.
The pass is unanimously, mayor.
Buzz, nicely done.
Very good. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Now, we're on item nine E, proposed town of Prescott Valley expenditure limitation in budget fiscal year 2020-2021. Mr. Tarkowski, you want to start us off?
Yes, Mayor and Council, as you are well aware, you started this process back in late October, early November, and started building the budget based on recommendations that you made to staff. Staff reported back to you in January after public input, as well as taking the results of our first retreat, and bringing all of those together to deliver you a budget in January. And things were moving along quite nicely. Direction was given to all the departments. They started working on their budgets, and then this thing called a virus showed up. And it undercut a number of assumptions that we were making in terms of total revenue. So, we have put together a budget. Katie and her team have done an outstanding job doing that, and she is more than prepared this evening to give you a 45-minute presentation with 50 different slides, if you want to start from day one and go all the way through the process. Typically, that is something that you don't really desire, but that's your call. But this year is different than others, and that is that we are asking for approval of the draft budget that you considered 30 days ago, and with the full knowledge that at the end of the first quarter of this fiscal year, meaning October 1st, we're going to reconvene a budget process and come back with recommendations to you based on revenue trends. Because right now, there are a number of things that have been put off limits for expenditure, like travel, training, things like that, and that's all on hold until we have revenue trends that we will be able to come back to you with in October, as we move through this very dynamic revenue shortfall and/or rebuilding of revenue stream. So, it's gonna be an interesting year.
With that being said, I'm gonna open it up right now for a public hearing. If there's anyone from the audience that would like to come down and just make some comments about this topic, now is your time. I'm guessing that's a no. Katie, you're back up. Continue with whatever you wish to say, and I believe, council, correct me if I'm wrong, are we not doing the PowerPoint this evening, what we've gone over last time?
Please.
All right, with that being said, we're gonna just make sure we're good on that before I close it out for the public hearing. Okay, so we're gonna close the public hearing. Katie, what do you have for us?
All right, for the next item, it's adoption of the expenditure limitation. This is the maximum amount that the town can spend, which is set at $119,673,163. And as Larry said, we plan in October to come back before you and potentially use some of the contingency funds that were built into this budget to refund some of the things that were previously cut, depending on our revenues. Are there any questions related to? Yes, sir.
Councilman?
Yes, just to the public out there watching, let them know how fiscally responsible Katie is and our town is. You just said that we have a maximum spending of $119 million, but at this point in time, we're only planning on spending $112. Is that correct?
It's actually less than that. It's $119 million actually includes transfers between our funds that are around $7.5 million. And then, we very rarely actually spend our full budget. It just sets the maximum cap, but usually, we are significantly below the amount we actually spend, because certain capital projects get delayed, or there's changes in staffing and things like that, so we actually come in quite below.
Yeah, and just to explain that to the public that's out there watching, who might not totally understand the budget process, is we set it at $119, even though we're planning on spending less, but we can't spend more than $119. So, if we had spent, set it at $112, let's say, and we, all of a sudden, we went back to the income that we did, you know, that we were expecting, we couldn't spend $119 because we only set the limit at $112. So, that's why we do it that way. And so, right now, it's $119, and we'll not go over that, so, thank you. I hope I explained it correctly.
And the only other thing I'd like to add is, the full tentative budget book is available online, as well as all the budget schedules for the town. And citizens can also call my office if they have any questions.
Anything else from council? Katie, I'm just gonna go on a little bit of a soapbox right now in regards to our budget. I know that October, we're gonna revisit this, and obviously, we are at a skinny budget right now, and we gotta understand that. I'd like to think, hopefully, staff is listening, and I know I sound like kind of a broken record, but we are at eight months, 40 overdoses in the town of Prescott Valley, with 11 deaths. And of those, 11 search warrants by pant, 26 felony arrests, they are at a capacity for trying to assist Prescott Valley. I bring this up because I was reached out by the high-intensity drug trafficking group from Phoenix, as well as Sheila Polk this week, emphasizing the importance of our drug issue here in Prescott Valley. So, if we were gonna have an intersection where we have, you know, 40 accidents and 11 fatalities, we'd be, Norm would be working overtime, trying to fix that intersection, trying to figure out what's wrong with it. So, there's no reason why we shouldn't be doing this with our police department. So, we need to support them. We need a direction for them, and, I mean, that's all I can really say. I hate to say that it's like a school shooting, where we only talk about it when school shootings happen, and then we talk about it for about a month, and then it goes away. We just need to focus, have a plan, have a direction. I'm confident in our police department and what we have, and we just need to take the fight to them. So, that's all I have. Vice Mayor?
I have an addendum to that. For those of you who don't know, I serve on the governing board of the Yavapai Guidance Center. The data that the mayor provided you doesn't cover the full picture, because the failed attempts are never counted. Think about that. We know, the House bill knows, but the numbers are much worse than you can ever think.
Now, with that being said, anything else? If not, we're gonna call for a vote, or call for a motion, please. Someone?
I'll make a motion. Motion to authorize the mayor in his absence the vice mayor to sign resolution number 2144, adopting the final fiscal year 2020 to 2021 expenditure limit and budget for the town of Prescott Valley as attached, subject to any changes made to the tentative budget after the public hearing by electronic vote.
I'll second.
Clerk, please call the vote.
The pass is unanimously, mayor.
Thank you. I know we've said it before, but Katie, great job on the budget. You did an amazing job. Moving on, item nine G, Parks and Rec System Master Plan. Mr. Elmer?
Mayor and council, there's not really a lot to say about this one. It is the recommendation of the Parks and Rec Department that we adopt the master plan as has been presented to you previously at another council meeting. This has been worked on through with staff and with the master plan design people since about April of last year. We put it together. We feel very strongly about the information that is in there, and we feel that it would prove us to adopt this master plan.
I want to say, Jason, we've had parks probably come in front of us three, maybe four times, kind of gradually putting this in front of us, and we've had a chance as council to respond, and it's always better to be thorough, which I believe we have been in this.
Absolutely.
So, nice job with that. Any other questions or comments for, please, councilman?
I do have a quick comment. We've been working on getting this process into the budget for many years, and I'm glad we were finally able this year to get it into the budget and get the process taken care of, and to get this plan in front of us. I'm really glad to see that we were able to do this before I leave, because I feel it's very important for the town.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to accept the recommendation of the Parks and Recreation Commission per town code 17-01-025B, and adopt the attached Parks and Recreation System Master Plan by electronic vote.
I'd like to second.
Clerk, please call the vote.
The pass is unanimously, mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. And I believe you're up for the next item as well.
I'm currently here for the turf vacuum. As you know, we mow a lot of grass, and this is actually for the grass, not for the artificial turf. So, what it is, is we're, there was some confusion. There was some confusion. So, our current turf vacuum is having lots of difficulties keeping up with the task. As we get into further into the monsoon season, we're gonna be mowing much, much more, and we're gonna have to vacuum regularly, or we're gonna start losing turf. That is why we're here requesting a turf vacuum.
Fair enough. Do you have any questions?
Then, how about a motion?
I'd like to make a motion, a motion to approve the contract with Simpson Norton Corporation to purchase a turf vacuum in the amount of $29,990.27 by electronic vote.
I'll second.
I think they should probably name it something different, other than a vacuum. A $29,000 vacuum.
It's an interesting picture. It's quite a huge vacuum.
It is. We can also use it for leaves in the fall and winter, so we're gonna get some dual uses out of this.
Yeah.
Vice Mayor, now your vote. Thank you. The pass is unanimously.
Thanks, ma'am. Moving on, item nine I, Florentine Road Stormwater Improvement, CIP number S446. Mr. Davis?
Good evening, Mayor and council. The item you have before you is the Florentine Stormwater Project we initially started, and we're going to do some pavement rehabilitation. So, here's the project limits that we initially anticipated, basically from Navajo Drive to Grizzly Bear. We're looking at this corridor, and as I mentioned, the original scope was there's a big ditch on the north side. We wanted to put an underground storm drain for better mobility in the area. In addition, look at the pavement. So, we engaged Dave and Associates to basically approach it with that simple scope. What we found, as the design engineer got into it, is the, never been a big investment in the pavement subgrade, and it would be very difficult to do an overlay and call that a good investment without losing the investment. So, that's what you find out when you hire good professionals. We looked a little further into the design effort, and we found the actual drainage in that area. We needed to expand the scope, just couldn't drop a pipe in the ground, so we need to look a little more at more significant drainage in order to get the particular area to a good release point. In addition, we engaged the utility group, and of course, with a big corridor like this, with any type of old corridor, there is some planned improvements in there. The biggest one is a sewer main. Actually, part of our master planning, it would be best expenditure to approach this project with putting, while you've got the subgrade removed, was to upgrade the sewer significantly. Oddly enough, that's a significant sewer for growth potential down in the lower reaches with the treatment plant, so the utilities group recommended need a sewer main, and lo and behold, the water line could use significant upgrade for better service, because there's actually not as much continuity as we'd like. So, you get an old area of town, the investment really needs to be made from the grassroots effort, and that's what staff is recommending. We just can't really put an overlay out there and call that a good use of dollars. That wouldn't be, hate to use the term wasteful, but not as prudent as we'd like to have. So, what we're asking is to engage Dave and Associates to do the full scope of rehabilitation project, very similar to the Sunset Lane project we're constructing now, and to do this project right, and, you know, from the bottom grassroots effort. So you get an old area of town, the investment really needs to be made from the grassroots effort, and that's what staff is recommending. We just can't really put an overlay out there and call that a good use of dollars. That would be, hate to use the term wasteful, but not as prudent as we'd like to have. So what we're asking is to engage Dave and Associates to do the full scope of rehabilitation project, very similar to the Sunset Lane project we're constructing now, and to do this project right, and, you know, from the bottom grassroots effort to get the decent pavement subgrade there, in addition, utility service, because this is a major corridor. In addition, some of the master plan sewers are our development impact fees that will go towards this in the sewer. So that's really the scope. That's staff's recommendation. So staff's recommendation to increase the scope of services with Dave and Associates for additional design services in the term in the amount of $81,000. We have to answer any questions at this time.
Vice Mayor?
I actually only have a comment. Does this mean I have to stop nagging you about Florentine? Does this mean it's the first big step I'm getting all of that fixed?
Well, and that's staff's recommendation. You're right. We'll keep the pavement safe. It is in need of rehabilitation, so we'll get these plans shelved, and we'll start capturing some money. Obviously, in outlook and budget years, we can probably capture some flood control district funding. That'll help get us to that end result, because I don't think I mentioned, we're looking at about $3.5 million is what we need to spend to do it right and keep moving forward.
I know, and in the older part of town, we sometimes get unpleasant surprises, don't we?
And, and the pavement section worked well out there up to this point, but we need to go back and make that investment to look at that long-term horizon of what this corridor needs to be as we continue to grow. And you find that in the old core areas that, you know, initially got started.
Councilman?
Norm, can you, for the audience, since it's not in the staff report, tell us from where to where?
Bottom at the bottom, actually, it's about 3,000 feet from Navajo, the arrows down at the bottom to Grizzly Bear. That is the project limits we're looking at to add additional design effort.
And this doesn't include our wish list for sidewalks further down?
It does. That $3.5 million investment, the way it breaks out, the pavement rehabilitation for the adequate pavement section, probably six inches asphalt and 15 to AB, would be about 1.5 million. The storm drain is in the neighborhood of a million. The utility is about $500,000. And then the sidewalk, just on the north side, would be an investment of about $500,000. So that's what we've heard from some direction from Council, and that's really the scope we're pursuing. So important thing to note, too, is the next slide. Oh, my God, wisdom.
Norm, while you're doing that, what's the timeline?
Well, I can't.
Again.
I can't get the second slide to show up. Timeline is, as I mentioned, we're going to shelve this set of plans. This particular project doesn't have a particular funding source other than HERF, so as I mentioned, with the shelved plans, we can start looking at capturing where that particular funding source can be with priorities. So a little bit of HERF funding for the pavement, and as I said, utility improvements. But as you can see here, that $3.5 million doesn't even include the curb gutter and sidewalk for the south side is what our current scope is. So it would be a phased approach again, as we approach a lot of projects in Prescott Valley.
So you designed it for a sidewalk on both sides, but you're only doing it on one side?
Correct.
Well, thank you.
Just a great project. Norm, I'm sure you've heard me talk about Florentine numerous times, and I just think it's so great that that portion of our town, I mean, I see, I drive by there every day, and there's people walking every day, you know, and this would just be such an added safety measure for them, and.
There's, there's lots of need. It's staff's recommendation. We approached this, and as I say, do it from the grassroots effort, so we get that expenditure correct. But it would be a good project to show focus in the future to identify those funding sources.
Absolutely.
And we've done it on all our capital projects. You'll notice the different budget accounts. We can have as many as four or five, and that's what we'll do in this particular project. And engage the utility department, and they're a significant partner in this, too, I would like to point out.
Vice Mayor?
A little humor. I've always loved that we had a street name, Grizzly Bear Drive. Now, if anybody wonders where that is, this project's right there.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I'm sorry. Can you send us these two slides, since they weren't in the staff report?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Not, we'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion. Motion to approve an amendment to the town engineer agreement with Dave and Associates in the amount of $81,920 by electronic vote.
I'll second it.
Clerk, please call the vote.
The pass is unanimously, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Moving on, item 10, comments from the public. Consideration and discussion of general unscheduled comments from the public. Those wishing to address the council need not request permission in advance. Any such remarks shall be addressed to the council as a whole and not to any member thereof. Such remarks shall be limited to five minutes unless additional time is granted by the mayor. At the conclusion of the unscheduled comments, individual members of the council may respond to the item addressed at the discretion of the mayor, or they may ask the town manager to review the matter or ask that the matter be placed on a future agenda. Here's our chance, folks. If you want to come down and talk about whatever's on your mind for five minutes. Yes, ma'am. Welcome.
Hello. Been a while since I've been here, huh?
Yes.
My name is Mary Hunter, and I live in Viewpoint West, and I've been here for two and a half years, having escaped from the people from the west. And I'm, I'm beginning to get really worried about the houses that are being built along our main streets. They're starting to look like houses in the west. They all look alike. They don't, they don't look attractive. They're very utilitarian, like Cracker, Cracker Boxes. And I know there's nothing we can do about it. The apartments that are on the other side of the street look very nice. The apartments downtown look nice. They're presented nicely, but those houses are just horrid, and I come from, from that value. I, I hope that in the future, when houses are approved along major arteries, let's say like Viewpoint, or any of the places that are empty right now, and I know they're going to be developed, please consider what our visitors see when they come into our town, because it looks ugly. And I wish they'd put trees or build fences that are really high there on that side of the road. It looks awful. So in the future, please try not to approve something ugly like that again. That's all.
Well, ma'am, I appreciate you coming out here, and thank you very much for your comments. Sir, do you have anything, or you're just leaving it up to her? Anyone else would like to comment? Five minutes? Two minutes? All right, with that, with that being said, I'm going to close the comments, and we're on to item 11.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Clerk, please call the vote.
The pass is unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. And before I hit the gavel, we'll be having a community facilities district board meeting after this as well, if you'd like to stick around for that. But if not, have a great night, folks, and thank you for coming out.